Okay, I'd like to call the Common School Committee meeting back to order. Note that we're live and ask for a public comment. Anyone bringing in any sheets? Nope. Okay, I'm gonna ask the committee for motion to move the donation of the Alcott sign up in the next in the agenda to allow for the pinch hitters who came to speak or be part of that. They came in last minute for Sharon, so so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we'll go to the donation of the Alcott sign.
Come on up Sharon.
Hi.
Thank you guys for coming.
Should I say?
Yeah, you guys can say it. And just your names and ages for the record.
Sherry Rascal, thirty seven Birch Drive. Jane Baldini, six seventy three Bedford Street. So we're here because last year's fifth grade class and this year's fifth grade class raised funds and would like to gift an Alcott sign to the school. So here's some samples of the sign. And if it is approved, we would like to have it installed ideally by the end of this year.
Oh great.
And the place is like to be determined exactly where it will be installed. And the coloring is to be determined too, so.
And is that gonna be amongst, do you have? I don't care what process that is.
We didn't know if you wanted to keep with the same as the theme.
A sign.
Yeah, I've not said on that. The blue was a pretty arbitrary decision because it was quick, easy and cheap.
On set.
So I don't know that you should feel obligated to the blue.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine with self-selecting unless you wanna override me on that.
I think whatever, you guys are donating a sign to the school which will be so highly appreciated.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say pick what you think is gonna look great for your school.
Okay, maybe we have a huge vote or something, you know, that might be fun selections and.
Yeah.
I think you could do that.
Get them involved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, great, great. Any other questions? Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's terrific, thank you for doing this, it's great, I mean, it's really exciting.
We talked about signs since I've held it for ten years usually.
Yeah. It's six, you know, you walk in and nobody knows that it's.
Yeah.
Until you come up to the school, so.
Right, right, and it's great, I think it's great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
And I'm happy you guys are going over the finish line, it's awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. You do it.
Alright, all those in favor, did I do that already? No.
Um, no.
We didn't.
No, we didn't, you just say thank you, sorry.
Yeah.
No, just go ahead and say thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we're good.
But the votes later, we'll accept it.
The vote is later.
We'll leave it out.
Thank you, thank you so much for bringing this.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we'll move to recognitions.
Yeah, so tonight we've asked the preschool and there are, I don't, a bunch of them here I see, so that's great. Janet O'Shea is gonna kick it open, she's our acting early childhood coordinator. And we thought it was time to really share with you the wonderful work that they're they're doing. I've got to spend time with them and hear more and I know quite a bit about some of the kids as we've been talking on their needs and how to continue to meet them. So I'm thrilled they're here and they can help us all learn more of what they're doing and make sure the public is aware of the great work they're up to.
That's good.
Jen, wanna come up? Aaron, could you click the presentation sheet?
Oh Jen's got it, yeah, it's great.
Oh Jen, you're gonna do the, Jen's gonna do the flipping. Are you guys gonna sit back?
Yeah.
Alright, Jen and I will do this.
So I'm Janet O'Shea and I'm the acting early childhood coordinator and also the school psychologist and the team chair for the preschool. And we have Jen Di Francesco here who's our instructor and teacher of the preschool. And we have Donna Gomu who's one of our OTs, Anne Bailey who's one of our speech therapists, and Christine Brown who's another one of our teachers. And we have some parents actually, some family members, so that's nice.
Oh great. No little guys with you though.
That's alright.
That's alright.
No? So we have a presentation here. And is it better if I stand over here maybe?
No.
Okay. Alright, we already did that Jen, so.
And the pitchhogs there just because we felt like it was cute. Yeah, because it was a few weeks.
He visited us a few weeks.
We have some, some cute pictures here. So anyhow, we are here at the Ripley building, which is a little different. So we're not in one of the school buildings. We have like our own little school here at Ripley in the front. And you might notice when you drive in, we have the new playground. That is all ours as well. And then we share the the building with Concord Children's Center and also the rec program has a little like mom and tot thing. But so it's all little kids here at Ripley and administrators, right? So anyways, what is integrated preschool? We are required to provide special ed services to children as they turn three years of age. So I work with early intervention when kids are identified as having some type of a disability. It could be from birth or up until they're three years old. And they let us know when they're around two and a half and then we go out and meet the families and we do our own evaluation. And if we find they need services, we service them here at the preschool. So that could involve coming to see Anne for speech once a week or coming to see Donna or they could be part of our preschool program, either in one of our half-day classes or one of our full-day programs, okay? We also have what we call community students at the preschool. And those are kids that are not identified with a special need and they're here and they pay tuition to come to the preschool just like they would one of the private preschools in town, okay? So they serve as peer models, language models. And you know, it's a great model, we really, we like the model. So we have a lot of kids with different special needs here at the preschool and we've really been trying to service all preschoolers that we get here in Concord here at the preschool. We don't have a lot of preschoolers in out-of-district placements. We are serving pretty much every single preschooler. I think there might be one, but that's it, everyone else is here. So that means that we're taking in kids with some very significant needs. We have a lot of kids on the autistic spectrum. We have kids with very significant medical needs. Here we have kids with hearing loss, vision loss, behavioral issues, a lot of language delays, that's really the most common need that we have, and gross and fine motor delays. So we really serve the gamut here. And I think that I've been here, this is my fourth year here and I think even over the last four years, the needs have really increased and we're, I think, more comfortable servicing kids that maybe we felt like we couldn't handle before. But now we're, we're doing it, so. Okay, oh and also we're seeing a lot of English language learners. We're finding that may not be seeing this at the upper grades and the high schools as much, but here in the preschool, we're finding there's a lot of families moving to Concord who's primary language is not English. And we're not just seeing one language, we're seeing a lot. So we have kids in the preschool that speak Arabic, Portuguese, Chinese, Spanish, help me out here.
Japanese.
Japanese.
Greek.
Greek is coming.
Russian.
Greek as of today, Russian.
Russian. Portuguese.
You believe this? So it's not like, you know, there's a lot of kids speaking Spanish. It's everything. And and we're, we're finding that our language-based model of teaching really works well with kids that are trying to acquire English as their second language. Okay? We are the welcome wagon for the Concord Public Schools. So for the children and for the parents, if they come to the preschool, we're the first Concord public school employees that they meet. So we wanna be really welcoming and we wanna be really positive and start everyone on a, on the right foot as they are probably gonna stay here for fifteen years. Because we might have them for three years and then they'll go through twelve or thirteen, so they could be here for a long time after meeting us. Our goals are to provide highly specialized and intensive interventions for our kids on IEPs. We want them to be able to access the whole preschool curriculum and we do that by really breaking it down. And our teachers are very skilled at doing this. It's really amazing, if you came in and observed one of our preschools, you probably might be able to pick out one kid that might be on an IEP and that might be because they have like a physical disability. But other than that, you may not know who has a disability and they may have a very significant disability. The teachers do a great job of including everyone in the activities they do in supporting kids so that they're accessing all aspects of the preschool curriculum. How do we do this?
Jen.
How do we do this?
A lot of trouble.
Uh, it's, I think, these teachers put in a tremendous amount of work. I mean, the planning they do is amazing. If you go into the classroom, they're always working on a thematic unit and it could, what is it, community helpers for some, someone?
Community classroom, sorry.
Okay, right now it's community helpers because I was at some classes today. And they'll have Scott Camilleri reading to the kids. They'll have a fire station set up. The, it's unbelievable the stuff they do. They had dinosaurs, last week I think it was dinosaurs?
No.
Everything's dinosaurs, okay? All the vocabulary that they're using is dinosaurs, the books they're reading, the sand table, everything is around that theme. What's your theme now Christine, is it?
Community.
Oh, community helpers, okay. So whenever they have a theme, there's a whole language-based curriculum around that theme. So kids really get it and it's, it's fun. Makes it another very, very happy.
It's a whole merge.
And therapies also include the language.
That's right.
Even if you're not a speech therapist.
Right, so if the.
The specific units are done in therapy.
So if speech, people are seeing kids and they're working on vocabulary, that's the vocabulary that they're working on and then it's being enforced in the classroom by the teachers and the tutors. Anything else with that? I think we're good. Classroom staffing. We have four masters level certified classroom teachers who specialize in early childhood and special ed. We also have two tutors in each program and we have a couple kids who have a one-on-one assistant with them. And so we're very well-staffed, but we find that that's really the key to our success because we have some pretty busy little kids in there. And when you go in there, they're all very engaged. They're all doing what they're supposed to be doing and that's because we have very supportive staff. Our specialist staff, we have almost two speech and language therapists, one point eight. We have a full-time OT. We also have a part-time physical therapist. We have a full-time nurse. And we have a part-time behavior specialist that works with us and I work part of my time as the school psychologist and as the team chair for the IEP meetings. Okay, our kids. We, we see these kids, as I, as I mentioned before, starting like two and a half years old. So they're babies and then I have to say, really can't even test them until they're two nine. And that's when we start the evaluation. So they're not even three years old and we're supposed to come up with, you know, what they need. So sometimes it's tricky because they don't have a lot of skills, especially, you know, we have kids that come to us, they have no language. You know, they have no, some of these kids aren't even walking. I mean, we have some pretty, some pretty needy little kids. And we get referrals from, as I mentioned, early intervention and also parents and pediatricians and also the private preschools. And sometimes we have kids that come in there in our community program and may also, we find out have a need and so they may be referred through our teaching staff. Okay. The Concord Integrated Preschool started in two thousand and one. I think Jen was here and Donna was here. How's that? And we service three and four-year-olds. We do not service kids that are age-appropriate for kindergarten. So we do that because they'd be here forever because no one really actually wants to leave not integrate preschool. So if they're kindergarten age, they go to kindergarten. We have two full-day programs. They're currently run from nine to two thirty, four days a week. And then we have two morning half-day programs from nine to eleven thirty and that's usually our younger kids, our threes turning four. And then in the afternoon, twelve thirty to three are usually our fours turning five, but we're flexible with, with the age, age groups there. We receive a lot of positive feedback from the elementary schools that our preschoolers are very well-prepared for kindergarten and for having the readiness skills that give them a very successful kindergarten experience. And isn't that cute? So thoughts or questions?
I just wanna point, one of the challenges of preschool is that it's rolling admission as the child ages in, we need to take them. So it's a very different planning or guessing process of trying to maintain staffing and ratios and things like that. So it's a very different beast. It's sort of, having run preschools in my past, it has a little life of its own because you're just constantly talking with EI and new referrals and newly identified kids and then.
Right. And we have like four, five new kids like in the last weekend at half.
Yeah, so I. Or in the past. Yeah, so you'll get a spot like that and, you know, you're, oh, you're constantly reviewing what you have for slots and availability and making sure you're gonna be able to meet the needs.
Well, and the thing of it is, is we can get a little heads-up from EI who's coming down the road, but then we have families that move in and they may have a very involved child and all of a sudden, we have to come up with all this support and staffing and it's January, but it's, you know, that's, that's the way it rolls for school.
Does that, does that mean that when you do your sort of beginning of the year, you sort of at least have a sense of what's coming in Concord of kids as they age very little?
Like this much. Sort of, we know early intervention because we kind of get a projection list
Yeah.
that we can kind of guess. But then all the parent referrals, the referrals from pediatricians, the move-ins like Janet said, it, it, it's tricky.
Yeah.
Then we have the kids that were from last year, the three fours, now they're four fives.
They're four fives, right.
So we, we start out with four fives and then if we get EI kids at the ends of the year, we know that they're gonna still continue.
Right. So like at the beginning of the year, we had a good number of openings for our special ed spots and they're all filled now.
Yeah.
And I mean, we'll still take kids because we have to take the kids. But you know, we're out, we're, we're now adding on. But we start off the year with some openings there because we know we're gonna get kids and we'll know some of them, but others, I mean, some of the more needy kids that we've gotten this year just moved in.
Yeah.
And we were like, oh, hi, okay. And then it's like, oh, it's a lot of work to get them, you know, moving into school.
One of the greatest challenges of preschool.
Yeah. And do you, you said you, you get the referrals, but you also do your own sort of assessment? It's there's, is it, it sounds like there's two?
So when we, so if somebody refers, like say a parent says, you know, I'm worried about, you know, my child's language skills or, or a preschool says this kid's having a hard time, we do an evaluation. So we have an evaluation team, which is myself, I do the cognitive and the behavioral assessments and I, I go and observe at the private preschools. And then Anne and Lindsay Donahue, our other speech therapist, they'll do the speech and language eval if that's what they need. And then we have Kristen Terrell who does PT. Donna and Jane Regazzo who's another OT that we have helping us right now, they do the OT.
And censor.
And, yeah, and so we have a whole preschool team.
It's a lot of people.
Well, and not everyone gets the whole evaluation, it's based on the referral questions.
Yeah. And they, so a long time, you've been there, two thousand and one. I can remember a lot of research and things haven't been done that really early intervention is the key to success sort of later on.
Mm-hmm.
If you, you know, if you can get them when they're three and really start to work with them. Have you guys seen any?
Oh, absolutely. We, I mean, just thinking, like, right now we're planning for our, our graduates to move on to kindergarten.
Well, you say you're, you're about, yeah, oh, right, right.
And I mean, some of these kids that came in, you know, three years ago, two and a half years ago, I mean, I'm thinking, there's one, one child who was one pound and had, you know, at birth and had all kinds, it's fabulous. There's so much growth, you know? Some kids come in and you think, these kids are gonna need a ton of service and they do initially and by the time they're done, they're looking pretty good.
Yeah.
And they move on to kindergarten. So a lot of these kids really amaze us.
That's awesome.
And they get tested every three years, so they're tested at two and a half. By the time they're in kindergarten, they have to have another set of testing
Yeah.
to stay on, you know, and to show the progress.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't do that testing usually.
Yeah.
I mean, I can tell you, like several years ago, I had a set of kids who came in with a PPD diagnosis. They were with us for three years. They came in with every service you can imagine. And by the time they left, they had foster diagnosis for children's and they only had a PG left. And now neither of them are on IEPs.
You know, we see a lot of success stories.
Oh wow.
Which is great. I mean, preschoolers are, they're just evolving so quickly.
Yeah.
And he don't get old.
For us.
That's right.
That's another reason we like to do it.
So, question I have is, what's the percentage of students from the community and special education students?
So we like to keep it around fifty fifty.
Okay.
One thing we have been finding is that our community has not been as receptive to the half-day model. There's a big, everybody wants their kid in the full day, but it's harder to get community peers in the half-day slot. So we've been kind of thinking about that because we really feel the peers are, are really important.
The peers are such an essential component to the program.
Yeah.
And we do a lottery and it, we advertise in the Concord Journal and, and the principals newsletters and that type of thing and we have an open house and that. And most of the, they want is in full day. That's what everybody wants.
And you don't mind the same thing though for those who are receiving services?
Well, kids who are receiving services would be getting full day based on their need.
Okay.
Okay, because.
So it might be provided anyway.
Yeah, but the, you know, the community peers, the families are paying.
Right, exactly.
You know, so the, obviously the tuition is more, so it's just.
Your full day, but we'll just, they like that.
They love that.
But we're really seeing the benefit of the full-day model versus the half-day that like, it's over.
It's quick.
It's fast.
Yeah.
I mean, we hit the ground running and we hold stock.
It's also. Yeah.
It's also if you're getting, if they're getting services to speech, to OT, to PT and they're here from nine to eleven thirty, but they're not really in the class getting the, the play and the social skills and the circle time.
Uh-huh.
You know, and the outdoor play, so it's a fine line.
So we take all that into consideration.
We try that.
Right.
Uh-huh.
Have you found that change over time, that people want more full day since two thousand and one?
It just wouldn't, well, I was in here then, but yeah, it just seems like that's,
Yeah.
and, and even, you know, in the, in the community preschools or the private preschools, they're offering more longer days.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
We're sort of competing against that in a sense.
Right.
And we wanna keep our community peers, so that's just something we.
Yeah.
And finding out family dynamics are changing, there's a lot of two working parent families now. Whereas initially when I came on in two thousand and one, I mean, we had all, most of the parents, there was always one parent at home. Now, you know, that's not so much the case. That's the reason why I'm wanting, leaning and wanting the full day.
Another thing I hear too is that, you know, some people that live all the way on the other side of town, but it takes them a half hour to get here. Because if you live, you know, down at the Muse and you're coming to the Concord Integrated Preschool, you're, you're going from one end of Concord to the other. So.
That could take a while.
Yeah.
And that's how we're.
Then they gotta get traumatic.
And sometimes community kids go to a morning preschool, a community preschool like, like Concord Children's.
The barn or something, yeah.
Here and then they walk over and they're in the afternoon, let's say Jen's class
Yeah.
Right.
for the half-day. These are community kids.
Yeah.
And even sometimes, I think it's not as much, you know?
Wow, thank you, this is incredible.
This is incredible, thank you for sharing.
Thanks for listening and all of that.
Really, so it, I, I mean, I've heard, I've never seen a formal presentation but anecdotally heard just how fantastic a job you all do, so.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you for taking the time to, to show it twice.
Convisit. Yeah, Convisit, it's very adorable.
Yeah.
I'd use it to open.
We'd love to.
Yes, I did, that's right.
He can see, that's right.
Really?
He opened us.
Yeah, one, two years ago.
Yes.
We showed him around.
I spent all day there.
It was the evening.
Oh well.
Alright, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I did inadvertently jump over minutes by mistake, I'm sorry. I approve the.
Alright.
Concord School Committee meeting.
I would move to approve the minutes from February fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, any comments or edits further, no?
No.
All those in favor?
Ari, thank you, aye.
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 Alright, chairs and liaison reports, where do we start?
Yeah, I know, exactly. Most of my liaison work ties into middle school stuff right now,
Yeah.
so I'll just wait and we'll address it with middle school more intentional discussion.
Yeah, I feel like that's what a lot of us have been doing. So I think we'll do, yeah, I don't think I've done anything but.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll get to that. Correspondence? Do we have any correspondence? We've had one email came today about bargaining.
There is what I think.
Oh, that's right.
Open bargaining versus not, but.
Just from a school's leader.
Yeah, another school.
No.
Alright, well, let's dive in, CMS reconfiguration, we have Justin here. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
At long last, feel like I've been wanting to hear about this for a while, so.
This is, this is great, or that's right, so. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I come, my last leg of my tour. We went out in the community, we went, we were able to hit all our current students at Sandbourne. We had a pretty, you know, almost, I think the auditorium is almost full. Talking about the reconfiguration to our current set of sixth and seventh grade families. They follow the challenge success forum that we had as well. Then we went out to Boston and we hit our Boston families, talked to them about the reconfiguration. And then after February vacation, I was able to visit Alcott, Willard and Ferrell.
Wow.
And I would say on average, there was between, I said between forty and sixty at each evening. All three were in the auditoriums. We were very deliberate in inviting the fourth grade families as well. We wanted to really just share out, you know, this is what the present of Concord.
Can you put a mic?
Yeah, this is what the, the present of Concord Middle School is really gonna look like. And for the fourth grade families, most of them are families where their oldest was in fourth and fifth. So it was a good evening. I have a video that I would like to share, that I shared with the groups, so I'm just gonna hook up my laptop.
Justin, while you're doing that, you made the tour T-shirts yet? CMS reconfiguration with all the dates of your tour stops on the back of the T-shirt.
Tour stops. You know, I just wanna give him a lot of kudos. It would've been much easier to have a night at Sandbourne and say to the elementary folks, if you wanna come, come.
Right, everybody comes.
And he didn't do that and I think it mattered particularly in the response and the turnout. You know, fifty to seventy parents at three different events is really great.
It's huge, yeah.
So I think that late work will serve us really well down the road but that was Justin taking that effort and initiative to make sure people felt connected to what was going on.
You know, putting those videos together, you know, we really had in mind the current families, the sixth and seventh grade families. So again, this video was shared with the current set of families and then also the elementary schools as well. It really tried to capture what's been going on at Concord Middle School for the last year and a half and really involving students and staff in this process. And also acknowledging, you're gonna see this many times, it's a thread throughout the video, acknowledging just how difficult change can be, especially for our current sixth and seventh graders. If you think about our seventh graders who walked through the door in fall of two thousand and seventeen, walked through the puberty door, they really thought they were gonna call puberty their home for the next three years. So we really tried to capture some authenticity in what this change means for our current population, but also generate some excitement. Certainly, the audience of the current sixth and seventh grade families had some anxiety to it and a lot of questions. When I went to the elementary schools, three elementary schools, seemed to be a lot of excitement about all their fifth graders and fourth graders landing in the same school, in the same community. My last elementary school, I won't mention which one, that was the longest of all the visits. Might get that for me personally. A lot of questions in the last one. The first two though went very well, again, a lot of positive energy. So again, this video was shared with all the stops that we made.
Both school buildings.
The big adjustment would be that our seventh and eighth graders will be in one of our two campuses and then all of our sixth graders will be together, the same campus at one of our two middle school buildings.
There are lots of challenges that have arisen with having teachers travel and having administration that travels between the buildings.
Working, many of our teachers have experience working in both buildings. Neither building is unfamiliar to students in the other building. And so I think that there's a lot of infrastructure in place to address the fear of that change.
And while some of that will remain, we really feel like devoting one building to the sixth grade and having the other building devoted to the seventh, eighth grade will help us better meet their needs.
And so to have students not need to worry about which of their friends will be in one building or the other, to all land in the same place is an absolutely, it's just an extremely exciting step.
We went to some schools that have that model and we felt like there were lots of great things coming out of that and while often the change was brought about by building limitations, that the, the thought and planning that went into it supported the students at their developmental levels in ways that we felt we could capture and that we could use for our students.
Currently, Needham has two middle schools, one is grade six and one is grade seven, eight. When we did break off, the grade six center and High Rock really focused on what is High Rock going to be? What are we going to stand for? What are we going to focus on? And we only had to focus on the four hundred and fifty students in front of us who all were at variable stages within the development of a sixth grader. We recognize though that we can't. We um recognize though that we can't be the same, we recognize that we're meeting different needs and students are starting at different places. We also recognize that being in one place for one year has different demands on staff and students and families than it does when you're in a multi-year school. Uh High Rock is constantly in a state of transition, we have a hundred and eighty days to get to know the students, um interact with them, meet their needs, and get them prepared for their next transition to middle school. Another factor that's essential in ensuring the disconnect is limited is working through some global programming, programming such as celebrations, community service, social emotional learning, that as school communities, you're looking at the developmental needs of students in sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade, and your scope and sequence of the activities and the experiences are all linked together. Even though they're at separate locations, the students can feel that this is one large middle school community that has a common vision and outcome for them in these certain categories, and you build a community and you're kind of in this together. Um and it's been ten years, there are definite aspects of being a one-year school that are challenging and that if I was in a three-grade configuration, I wouldn't face. Um there are challenges we face because the building that we're in was really designed as an elementary school and not a middle school. But when I look holistically at the ability of teachers to focus on their work and focus on the child and be responsive to those children in front of them, I'm not so sure it matters what configuration you're in, whether you're in a six through eight, whether you're in a K through eight, I think it's about building a culture and a community of a common vision, a common focus, um and that you're a community together, and so my advice moving forward to any school that's reconfiguring, recognize that there would be loss, and also recognize there's opportunities and potentials that you might not have seen before. Oftentimes, we say, well, we didn't do that in the past, you're right, we didn't, but we have the opportunity to do something different now, so why not look through it, why not take that risk?
I didn't choose the music. I've seen this really about twelve times, lesbian dance. Thank you for coming, um this is the second big take on the topic of the new configuration called the PBD in the Sandborn building. So very deliberately, I wanna make sure that our assistant principals, your teachers, myself, listen to all of you. Alright, so in front of you is a piece of paper, um if you could just actually kind of fold it like so.
More together all the time and we don't have, we're not two separate schools.
I maybe people think that having sixth graders who resettle twice is not a good idea, I think it's a really good idea because the sixth grader can adapt to the real world and even later high school.
You go from PBD, that's small, and then you go to Sandborn, that's that's um bigger, and then you go to high school, and that's even bigger. So you get used to like going to a new building.
Not like college, you're in another world, another real world.
The sixth graders will be with the people that they knew in kindergarten to fifth grade, so they won't have to, you know, be separated from them.
Obviously, we could get like.
And also like teachers would all be grouped together, so they could like share a curriculum, they could have these, it's just like easier for all teachers.
Teachers that teach seventh, sixth, and eighth, they don't have to like take up their time to communicate with the other teachers at Sandborn or PBD, they can just talk to the teachers per school office.
Because with all the stuff that um works with like each grade, I think that there definitely be more of um a community, I guess, and like a more collective like community one.
Well, it's been like, cause you have more people that are interested in the same building.
I think it's good for the band orchestra program as well, because the orchestra meant you doesn't have to move all the way at once, and when we perform, we don't have to be separated and have to branch all at once, but everybody can be in there at once.
Yeah.
You have to, the students will have that little tour of the new building, maybe a bit of a transition.
A connection between um teachers, all the grade teachers, I would slightly recommend, because they will all be separated as individuals.
Also friendships between sixth, sixth graders and seventh, eighth graders, cause you're not gonna see them in the halls or anything.
If there was like a sibling, like an older sibling that was in the building, um there'd be.
Two transitions from sixth grade to seventh grade, just like.
And you lose like contact with them, cause they need a different building, I think part of the thing that's really cool about creating Sandborn is that you're with like a totally new different group, and that really forces people to branch out. And so getting lost in a new building would probably be a, there's a peer network program, so it will happen.
Yeah, yeah.
During the holiday, playing the summer games, it's not, it's not gonna be sixth, seventh, eighth, just in the sixth grade.
Teachers that teach uh different grades, now we have to be in buildings where like period that we have to like just teach at Sandborn maybe. Teachers that you probably, you've been waiting for.
Yeah.
Throughout the uh the school years, you may not get.
More space means more teachers and more laptops, more teachers doing many different things, and not just four course owners.
Um I think also a lot of lines of friends, you get to meet a lot of different people, and you get a more diverse community. You meet all the people that uh right now they're separated, but you can meet all the new people from the private schools and from the different elementary schools.
You get to keep your friends from elementary school. Going for like challenges regarding transitions to fifth grade, to sixth grade, to seventh grade, to eighth grade.
That's a real good feeling as well, like so like somebody's out, like so you're gonna be helping to get them to get things.
Instead of just knowing the few teachers from the youth school, you can get a little more.
Will that still be, will it be like alcohol?
Yeah, so great question, certainly not unethical, but we're gonna be mixing your mind.
Would the bus schedule still be the same?
So I think buses and the boarding and the afterday are really look pretty much identical to what we have right now.
And then will they bus the half the bus thing from sixth, uh somebody who needs Sandborn at grade eight happen?
In an effort to preserve what we have, it's also to deal with the threat of after-school activities or threaten right now. So we have to make it just as easy for PBD students to get to Sandborn, Sandborn students to get to PBD.
How's the plan for seventh graders' transition to Sandborn eighth grade going to be?
So at the end of each school year, including the end of this year, we have to make sure that the PBD students have an orientation over here. We're thinking about when eighth graders who are in Washington DC, we're gonna bring them over here to kind of do an orientation of the building.
Yeah, but for the teachers that currently teach like multiple grades, will they have to like make separate, you know, like periods of time to like commute to different um schools for those different grades?
Being a traveling teacher is very difficult, being a travel principal is very difficult, you know, we're looking to actually make sure that there's less travelers. So again, we really, in putting that together, we were really trying to bring the student voice into these presentations, um and try to capture an excitement, but also, you know, um some, as I said earlier, authenticity of what the students are kind of going through now, um and try to, you know, really get a sense of, you know, what the last year and a half has been like in these discussions. Um I forgot to mention, we also were able to get to the fifth grade students, uh so we hit the fifth grade students at each elementary school as well. And um we've been giving a lot of our time with the current students, especially those students who are PBD, I have to restate, you know, those are students who are um seeking me out, having lunch in my office, and just needing, you know, us to time it, you know, slow this down, talk through it, what next year's gonna look like, um but I actually just got an email from a Sandborn student today, you know, sharing, hey, can we talk about this, is this really happening? You know, and so, you know, I think we need to recognize that, um you know, again, especially those who, you know, maybe they're the youngest in the family and they've already been through the middle school, um and you know, Sandborn has called, you know, they've called Sandborn, the family has called Sandborn home, or called PBD home. You know, which is one of the intents we have, of course, is to really give the students an identity of Concord Middle School, not necessarily a building of their identity. Um we also talked uh during the presentations at each elementary school, um and a little bit at the Sandborn presentation for the current families, so a little bit about our master schedule and the changes that we're looking at. You know, we really looked at this reconfiguration as, boy, this is a great opportunity to really tear down some things and really build from the ground up. One of them.
Stereobased middle school.
If that helps you, Jared.
Sounds like that's what we're trying.
You're speaking his language.
Yes, um so, you know, there were two, there were a couple of different areas that I made sure that were part of the presentation. One was the master schedule, that were almost finished, the Sandborn master schedule for next year is pretty much done, including um just for sake of fidelity of the schedule and making sure that it would hold, we actually took all our current sixth, seventh, sixth graders and all our current seventh graders and put them in the schedule. Um and even went so far as printing out like class lists, um now they're not done, those aren't the actual classes, we just wanted to make sure that, you know, the framework uh looked great, but sort of the framework five years ago. And it seems to me, when really doing the due diligence and looking back at the history, it was when placing the students into the schedule that it would splinter in in pieces, um in certain areas. So we made sure that, you know, once the framework looked good, which again, the Sandborn framework does look good, put students in. Um we are about ninety percent done with the PBD master schedule, we're making a presentation of a couple of different variations of it this coming Monday to the master schedule committee, um and we're gonna accept feedback um and go and uh forward to the faculty and staff at the middle school at the April second faculty meeting. So we're hoping both master schedules um offer up just um a deeper focus on RTI intervention, but also an opportunity for more enrichment. Um and we're hoping that it also offers up um some of our core teachers to offer up some of that intervention enrichment. You know, when I shared that out with the different groups in the elementary schools, um you know, I saw a lot of parents kind of moving into that notion. You know, on one hand, it was exciting to go out and share all these great things that are happening at the middle school, on the other hand, it was framed with we're not done with all this work, um and there will be a second opportunity for the rising fifth grade families to come in and learn about the intimate detail of the PBD master schedule in the sixth grade. Um that's gonna happen, and that has historically happened in the many months, um and we're also gonna offer something for our current families as well, to really offer up what the difference, um what the sixth, what the seventh and eighth grade master schedule will look like in Sandborn as well. We talked about special education as well, um special education is something we're reimagining. Um you know, we're really looking at the role of the case manager at Concord Middle Schools, special education teachers are case managers. They do a lot of work with the IP, they do a lot of work, um you know, scheduling meetings, chairing meetings. We're really looking to take that off the plate, we want them focused on um being special education teachers and delivering specialized instruction. We're taking a look at our learning centers, um we've had a couple um days where an consultant has been brought in and we've been really deeply focused on um the West Ed review that was done. And we're really looking to do, um kind of follow the footprints of um the high school, um and look at the great work that they had done and really relooking at what a special education classroom looks like and what a learning center looks like. Um we're really excited about that work, that work is almost completed as well, and then we've done some work with challenge success. Um challenge success and really looking at our master schedule and really trying to capture a more balance for our students. Um we're even looking at the laptops, um and introducing, integrating them a little bit more slowly with our sixth graders, um and doing a lot more digital literacy and a lot more using these tools um as a way to promote higher, higher learning, higher order learning. Um and just, you know, the the presence on the laptops, especially for our youngest students, our eleven-year-olds. Um we're taking a hard look at that, we're looking to maybe scale that back just a little, especially in those first few months of middle school.
So what are you doing?
I wasn't kidding, I said stereobased middle school.
Yeah, wow.
Just a cup, a point I have to make, the I've been really trying to be engaged with all this, giving a vast amount of work. Justin's not doing this by himself, the teachers have highly engaged and are sitting on multiple committees for everything you mentioned, there's a team of teachers sitting with us and talking with us and giving us feedback and seeing updates, and they're doing that on their own time voluntarily because they care so much and they wanna just keep the middle school growing and and going in a positive direction. We know that we need those expertise in the room, cause every perspective is important and there's no way we could account for all the different moving pieces by ourselves, so I just have to, you know, really give the middle school staff a huge shout out, because I think to to have them take on the level of time and commitment they've had would be, thanks, all even good change comes with thanks, Justin's done a great job of reminding us of that, while they're in a two facilities that are our least, we're gonna get to that part in a minute, are least academically supportive of all of our schools is just an awful lot to to manage, so um I just really need to say thank you to them, because none of this would be happening without them, and it it is a lot, and we know that. And we're grateful that they're as engaged as they are.
I was gonna say, you you talked about the change, and we're a family, all went to PBD for kids, um and I, you know, because Chester's eighth grade won't have to manage that, but it made me think that, you know, it's it's hard enough for adults to change.
Mm hmm.
And I hadn't really focused on an aspect of some of that stuff that that would be, you know, some of the underlying issues for some kids and um you know, obviously, and the adults in your community or staff and the teachers are are gonna be asked to make changes, and so it's a lot for everybody, it's sort of
Yeah.
You know, the sort of the more emotional stuff that's that's hard and.
We didn't even mention the move of how we get everybody in the right place, which we're starting to plan, Jared's gonna run that, um just the logistics of
Yeah.
packing up the
Yes.
the PBD teachers who need to go to Sandborn, vice versa, some internal moving within, and then what we're hoping to do for painting and carpeting in the midst of all that, whole nother layer of work to be done, so.
Which brings me to a question, uh given the new configuration, there must be some time savings for several teachers, would, is that a fair assumption?
Traveling teachers, probably.
Traveling and just in terms of, you know, having uh the equity issue, you know, that's been something that's been a a concern and and you have to spend a lot of time on that, making sure that, you know, students get pretty much the same experience at both schools, that's obviously not gonna be an issue anymore, so I mean, just conceptually, I'm thinking that oughta result in some time savings for some teachers, but.
Uh you know, I mentioned earlier, I think the opportunity for enrichment uh intervention through RTI, you know, is more available.
Okay.
You know, if I have a seventh grade, you know, math intervention group of four kids at PBD, uh a seventh grade math intervention kids of three at Sandborn, next year, I'm able to put them together.
Yeah.
Um and opposite, you know, the math teacher who's offering an intervention maybe for a trimester is another math teacher who can possibly offer like an enrichment for the same trimester, and then they can switch.
It's a good example.
Yep. And then as Lori did say, you know. And then as Lori did say, you know, I, I think, you know, the number of teachers who are traveling between both buildings, you know, even if we haven't done this new configuration, I just think quietly it just kind of start getting really bad. So, you know, in an effort, you know, one of the guiding principles of putting together a new master schedule is to take that list that is over twenty and decrease that significantly. And, you know, we're under ten, we're holding under ten, you know, I'll know the exact amount when we finish the puberty schedule. You know, again, you saw it in one of my think tanks, you know, traveling, you know, brings out a certain, you know, aspect of the job where you're always thinking, okay, where do I put that? Oh yeah, it's in the other building. You know, always looking at the clock about, you know, planning your transition. So, you know, decreasing that number, I think is going to allow, you know, the staff who are not traveling to really get a sense of, okay, this building's my home, this house is my home and I can kind of, you know, put it.
Well, being in one of the elementary schools still, I can echo the excitement that you mentioned. And, and maybe you got a lot of questions from one of them, I don't know which one, but despite that, I, I travel amongst many elementary school parents and I have heard great excitement everywhere I go. It's, it's really neat for them to be looking forward to this middle school experience, even those who are going to be starting soon and not in a new building or anything like that. But, but there's excitement around the fact that all of those friends are going to go together and that they don't have to be split up. And that right there is just huge in terms of, they might be having one more transition, but, but it, I think it will be less stressful than the existing one transition, which can be a very stressful one. And so taking that off the plate is, is much appreciated.
Yeah, and my final thought is, you know, doing the due diligence of going to the communities who have done this, you know, have their own sixth grade building and their own seventh and eighth grade building. You know, they're really stressed upon us to focus on that transition from sixth to seventh, how it will be different and how you have to have people who are focused, you know, on both buildings. You know, support for families so families can, you know, have a contact for all three years and not just have a contact for the sixth grade building and for the seventh and eighth grade building. You know, we're very fortunate to learn, you know, really from the sixth, you know, in talking about things like even the after-school program and how, you know, we want our students to feel comfortable coming together, regardless of what building it is, because we have such a robust after-school program. It's another area where our teachers and staff just shine. And, you know, you may have caught that in the think tank, we want to make sure that's not a threat in this as well.
Well, thank you for your leadership on this. I've been on this committee for almost six years and we've talked about it every year. And now to see that it's actually going to happen is really exciting because I think it is in the best interest of kids. But the number of hurdles to get over to get there, it was a lot. And thank you for doing that, even working on the schedule this early. It's all those things, that's obviously a lot of work, so thank you and thank your staff.
Yeah, I was, you know, Lori said what I was going to share. Just, you know, I'm, I'm, we're just so grateful to have a staff, you know, who, you know, especially, you know, we're hitting upon, you know, the puberty, you know, my wife went to puberty, so she reminds me of it a, you know, a lot. And just, you know, how special that building is for some of the families, but also for some of the staff too. You know, and they're able to say, this is what's best for kids, but, you know, I'm going through something right now too and let's kind of talk this through. But for them, then the, the C M S staff, the teachers and staff to have a focus on what's best for kids is all we can ask. You know, the, the facilities people though, the support that we're getting from Jared with the move, we're having a big move meeting tomorrow, building service workers, all of them have been just so supportive and excited about this, you know. Change is slow until it's about to happen.
Right.
And that's where we are.
Awesome, well, thank you, thanks for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
To share like that.
I would just like to offer up a thank you to the committee though, and your commitment to the warrant article. The teachers and staff are just really blown away at the sharing that I've done. They know that I've been out sharing at different forums and they're starting to learn and they're asking me that there are other forums out there also focused on middle school.
Oh yeah.
And, you know. Just a few.
It created a little, you know, consumer confusion, that's okay, it's criminal, I don't have a problem.
We'll make our own tour T-shirt.
In my forums, I said, I'm the ghost of middle school present. Heather's the ghost of middle school future. But the teachers and staff just wanted me to share appreciation of the commitment that all of you have to the warrant article and to quite possibly a new school, which is, you know, new configuration, we're excited about it, but our, our goal is one goal, and I think we all know that.
Definitely.
Awesome, thank you, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, and on that topic.
Yeah, lead them.
Yep, good leading.
Yes, you teach us up.
So in terms of our C M S capital warrant article.
Yes.
I thought we would do some summary, I know you're going to have to go soon and we need to look at the language of the article, but do we want it by order, you want to do this and do just quick update of where we've been and what.
Sure, I can do, I can start off with that.
Yeah, because you've done a lot and I know we have some information up soon, then maybe we can look at some of the remaining questions. Yeah, just, so you know what Jared and I have in our hands here? He's passing out the breakout of the one point five of the article.
Oh, good, perfect.
Maybe we should do these first, honestly, just because I think they are the meat and the rest is the, the rest.
Yeah.
Can we pass them to the, oh.
Yeah.
It's what we did yesterday.
And we've got possibly revised article language based on the feedback that we've had in the community, so.
Can you give a little background to that, that there's some checklist?
So this is coming from our bond attorney with the feedback that we have heard of the confusion potentially over only using the feasibility study language. So he's redrafted it with me saying to him, the confusion has been that the scope is bigger. Legally, we're fine, we've confirmed all of that, that we could do the entire schematic design feasibility study, the hiring, the O P M and to have the environmental funds available, whatever we might need within the one point five, the way it is worded now in the warrant. That said, we've been hearing that we need to be clearer. So this is what he's proposed, I think you'll see that it's itemized schematic design. Do you have extras that we could give to the audience?
Oh, oh, I thought these went, sorry, I thought they went around.
We have too many doubts that we.
Sit down, Jim, I'll give you some.
So it outlines more specifically the schematic design, we're here to hear feedback. I think we also probably need some conversation over how we manage this, if we're going to consider any changes because that would have to be a proposed amendment council of town meeting. To change it from your, you know, as you, as you were originating that.
I'm sorry, are you able to highlight where the changes actually were inserted?
Yeah, the bulk of it really is, if you read lines three and four, it used to say for a feasibility study, you'd consider the construction of the middle school. Now it says including the schematic design of one or more options. And we also changed the language so that it's now Concord Middle School Building Committee instead of School Committee.
Right.
Those are the two changes.
And so the, the, the process for changing an article language.
Yeah, I've been talking with Carmen on this and I think we're not a hundred percent tidied up, but the way we've been, it's a town meeting change for sure. My understanding, and again, I want Carmen to validate all this, is that you as a committee can propose the amendment right from the beginning of the discussion, which we've all seen that it gets actually put into the presentation and proposed amendment right from the start, as almost part of the presentation. So I think that would be one option. The other option is you let it go up as is, do the presentation and then propose it, or it gets proposed from the floor, so.
And are we, we're going to discuss that tonight and figure out our.
Yeah, I literally need to start that discussion because your only other time to discuss would be as part of the joint meeting in two weeks or before town meeting.
Tonight's the night. Just wanted to make sure that we're not waiting for more information from Carmen before we.
Well, I think if you give me the feedback, I'll ask her to confirm that what you're hoping to do is the right direction.
Right.
Off the cuff, I think it would be better to do it at the outset so that people who are listening to the presentation understand the scope of, of what we're talking about. Yeah, I think if we go through the, if we go through the presentation and then raise it, I think some people will wonder, well, how does that change the presentation? Or it doesn't change it at all, but that would be more either of them, we're going to first.
And we need to be clear that this, this is what we're proposing upfront. It doesn't, it's, it isn't just getting changed because somebody brought it up on the floor. I mean, we need to be very clear from the beginning, this is exactly what we're asking for, so. If it's not clear now, I agree, we need to amend it as we go in.
Yeah, and, and I think this is just to be clear, from feedback around presentations that we've been doing and information sessions and from folks, it was a little unclear, the language, the way it read was legally fine, but unclear for people to really understand what exactly we were proposing to do with said funds, which we can talk about in a sec, but I appreciate the work to go back and say, how can you clarify this to keep it, you know, one, that it was okay the way it was, but it's better if people understand the outset, what exactly we're asking.
Exactly.
And how, how that would work, what the mechanism for that could happen.
Yep, agreed.
So, you know.
I think in some way you'd need to vote for what you want to do.
That's what I asked, do we?
I, I believe you would need to vote that you're going to change what you've already voted.
And is that, can we do that if it's, is it on as a vote?
It is not on there because I wasn't quite sure how far we were going to get on this conversation.
Right.
So you could vote it in two weeks.
Do, right, I was going to say, if we decide that that's what we want to do tonight, do we want to get confirmation from Carmen before we actually vote it? So we could put it on our votes for next time.
That would be my suggestion and maybe we try to loop town council into ahead so that everybody's on the same page.
I agree.
That would, we could do that over the next two weeks and then you could vote.
Right, and we could vote at twenty-six meeting. Is there, I guess there's some public interest, probably want to come give a comment? Yeah. That, that one's working, that one's not, I'm sorry, thank you.
You've already forced out, I just wanted to say that I've learned from people in the community about this and I think it's extremely important in the presentation to explain why all those four items should go together. Because I've already heard people saying, let's do only two and wait with the others. Why I think the committee has to prepare a presentation and explain that without having all those four things together, there won't be a possibility to give a reasonable estimate of the project's size and cost.
Thank you, you're right, yeah, appreciate that.
It might make sense for Jared to go through those four items and we can talk on each of them.
So as I wrote my memo, I've spoken, I've spoken to many current business managers, many O P Ms, architects, tried to exhaust it, ask every question I possibly could. These numbers are approximate. The two that may fluctuate a little bit are the schematic design and the feasibility study. But the schematic design would be a higher cost than the feasibility study. But based on all the feedback that I have gotten, right now, my breakdown of the one point five million would be five hundred thousand for the schematic design, four hundred thousand for the feasibility study, three hundred thousand for the onus project manager who would leave the feasibility study and three hundred in, you know, hazmat, G O and other, other contingencies. Other things, other feedback that I got is the, every dollar that you spend right now on learning the site, learning all of your options, you're going to save ten dollars down the line. It's very, very important to, to, to get as much information so you can put out a bid package that people, that, you know, general contractors can, can bid on and give you a, a, a really good cost estimate. That was, that was one of the biggest takeaways that I got. The, there's a couple of other things that I should mention as well is going through M S B A, the cost might be a little bit higher on a feasibility study than going all on its own. Because they, you have to go through a little bit more hoops through M S B A. So I also learned that. The other thing that is important to learn as well is when you're looking on the M S B A site and a lot of the numbers that they're putting down for feasibility studies is the cost of the feasibility study that was the end price of the, was the bid on price. There are many overruns and a lot of times those overrun costs do not get charged to the feasibility study. For example, you may have an onus project manager that is not included necessarily in the original feasibility cost and it's charged to a subcategory in the, in the O P M cost, yet it's, part of that is for the feasibility study. Other could be such as the hazmat, traffic, et cetera. So some prices that may be on there, it's, it's, it's not always comparing apples to apples. So this one point five million should allow us to really make a very informed decision with this price.
Good, oh, sorry, just a quick question on this, the hazmat and G O stuff and, and other, is that a part of the feasibility study or a part of schematic design or a part of both?
Part of both.
Okay.
Yeah.
All depending on the needs of the site, so I want to really clarify because this is another point of confusion. We are not doing a feasibility study to determine if we need a middle school. You have all decided that you need a middle school.
We determined that.
That is not the discussion right now and that's the erroneous piece that happens with the interpretation of the feasibility we're getting used in multiple formats. We are looking at a feasibility study of the Sandborne land to determine what school would best fit there to inform the schematic design. And that's why they need the hazmat and the G O, they do all sorts of testing and really survey the land so that they're very sure of what options are viable as to inform the architect who's going to be doing the design work. So those have to go together, you really can't break them apart because to do a feasibility study, what the land would offer has to feed the building design and then vice versa. So it's, I want to be sure we're clear about that because that's had some, some confusion for sure.
Yeah, and to that point, at the high school, the comprehensive work in that regard was also delineating that when they found, you know, they, they knew of contaminated.
Correct.
Lands, but they really, they did it, there was a lot of time and expense to delineate the, you know, what's now the capped landfill and how far and wide exactly where and how deep and what were the possible remediation options, et cetera. And that, that's a very, that's a very extensive, that's very intensive work.
That's a great example.
And likewise, all, all the land around, to be sure we weren't building on contaminated land and because they knew some of it was and had to figure out how, where and why. And that was particularly complicated because it was spread over time as it was a burning site. And so anyway, that was, that was very expensive.
So just to be clear, what's G O and other subs, what exactly?
So G O, environmental engineering is, actually I pulled it up just to give a, it's, it's, making sure that engineers are capable of identifying and preventing, you know, problems with the facilities, you know, that, that may affect the environment. Other, you know.
I would say at the high school, your example, water runoff and all the impact of the water supply over there. Sandborne's a little simpler, thankfully. But you never know what you're going to find either, that's the whole point of the feasibility study is survey the land and really know what's there, so.
Yeah, that sort of cuts both ways, it's how does the land affect the building of the building?
And how does the building affect the land?
And that is ultimately the design of the building and the structure.
Yeah.
Of the land.
Well, when you build something to the drainage, it also affects how water flows.
Right.
So if you have a new site and new buildings.
And we do know, there's a slope there that may.
Oh, definitely.
There's slopes, there are wetlands, frosty areas.
And there's wetlands further down, so that all is going to have to be thoughtfully put together so that the, the rainwater does what it's, needs to do.
It's got to go in the right direction and sometimes it's got to be captured on the ground and, yeah, it's a lot.
So basically, all of those things play into the feasibility study in terms of understanding all of those elements. And then they will play in again to the schematic design because we have to take into account those elements that we've learned about and incorporate them somehow or, or plan accordingly because of them.
Okay.
Just so, so that's how it plays to both.
Turn to, turn to Yvonne's comment. Turn to, turn to Yvonne's comment, um, what we just talked about, it will be included in the presentation and
Most of it.
Not as long, but, yeah.
Right, yeah. Yep.
Good.
Um, and to basically clarify too, this, um, because actually I said this the other day, and I should now make sure I was speaking the truth and speaking clearly, i- if we were to, let's say, as some people have suggested, do just a feasibility study now and not the design yet, um, that basically just kind of cuts us off dead in the water, we then have to just wait a year and do the design study. Basically, it's almost like putting the whole thing off a year.
Well, absolutely, that's different.
Because we can't do anything else in between, right? So to do only half is essentially the same as putting the whole thing off a year.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Which, in the end, and we won't get into our whole discussion, but costs us money because of our cost of waiting. Okay, just wanted to try and spoken out clearly.
Yeah, and I I think, the, I think the point, what I've heard uh, is there's some notion that the feasibility study is some part of what we've already done with the facility study.
Yes.
That's, that's.
Right, right.
And and I know that, you know, I mean, there's no expectation that people are paying attention to what we're doing, but we've, for two and a half years, we've been working with the fees, with the facility study.
Facilities, yeah.
All of that information, all of those presentations are available on the website. And we are more than happy to talk to people about what we learned there.
Right.
And I think, you know, and not to confuse that work with schematic design, those designs that are in the back were simply to give us a sense of scale and scope on very grand scale of doing additions versus new buildings.
Right.
Um, and, you know, it's like, all of which we've tried to explain, but it's it's conceptually, if you're not mired in this like we are, um, can be challenging to understand.
I mean, everybody doesn't live and breathe middle school plans.
As you mentioned.
Well. Yeah. I don't know, I haven't drafted that in a while.
Um, so I think this, both these clarifications are excellent, and I think that that sense of people have support for the language change. We just do our circle back with, um, you know, the, um, council and Carmen and town council.
Yeah.
And just one other question, just clarifying for many, including myself, is what does the owner's project manager actually do? I mean, what what what's their function, what's their?
They run the project.
They run the whole thing.
They run the project, and so they oversee
Yeah.
the schematic design?
Everything.
So they all members. And they they have a fiduciary responsibility to us, to the town.
Okay.
Which is not the case, I mean, they have, the others have a contractual responsibility, but they have fiduciary.
Okay, okay. Oh, responsibility, okay.
They also, um, so there are a lot of people that are hired to do the work, to test and do di- do different kinds of testing
Okay, sorry.
and to do sighting and to do, um, the architects to do design, to do, so they are responsible for all those people that are in essence, sub subcontractors to, um, manage the job and report back and be accountable for.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it usually, I I don't know if it's the same, it's the same presidential building, but someone oversees it, some percentage of, it roughly lands on some percentage of the cost to do the work.
Ten, ten percent, yeah.
I mean, roughly, I'm just saying that's sort of how anybody who's managing a project is paid to do the work.
And that O P M basically reports into the building committee, correct?
Yeah, so the O P M's gonna bid on this project, so.
Right.
I think it's a little different than just assuming it's ten percent, cuz they're gonna get the scope and then.
Right, no, I wasn't saying they land on a percent, but roughly speaking, what they're doing is
Right, okay.
being, it's how they are gonna over, they're they're paid to oversee all these other people and
Right, on our behalf.
On our behalf, yes, exactly, yeah, correct, right.
Almost like the general, on the town's behalf, right.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's important.
So they'd be hired hired first, and then they run the the rest?
The bid process.
And they're, they're not by, uh, nature of having been accepted as the O P M here necessarily the O P M on the project. If we go forward with the build, that'll be bid out again.
Right.
As part of that process.
Correct.
I mean, they should have laid up and better understanding.
Right.
Yeah, I think.
We'll have a better understanding of their.
Typically, usually.
Oh, yeah, I haven't seen changes, but.
Right.
To, you're technically.
Yeah.
Other questions? Good.
Yeah, I think this is gonna be very helpful.
Well, Beres.
Thanks.
Oh, just another thing to confirm, kind of similar to Laurie's point, in case people are asking, um, just because Feingold Alexander did our facility study does not mean that they are doing any of this work going forward, it will all be put out to bid.
Mm-hmm.
They can bid just like anyone else. They have obviously some understanding of what's going on, but it doesn't mean that they will necessarily get that bid, so that just something else to clarify in case anybody asks.
And, um, and the process also for people to be clear on is that the, uh, O P M is hired by, right away, if, as as sort of, you know, put out the bid for the project, and then they work in conjunction with, to the building committee that's co- put together.
Correct, absolutely.
And that is the relationship of communication and, um,
Absolutely.
uh, decision making, and the, and the building committee is, reports back to the board of selectmen.
Right. Right, speaking of which, can we thank the board of selectmen, please, for already starting to discuss the creation of a building committee? Um, because as we've said, i- if this does pass, we wanna be able to start moving forward very quickly. I think it's very important that we have a building committee teed up and ready to go. So I'm very appreciative that the select board has already started to talk about that, so that that can move forward.
And perhaps I could make a comment?
Sure.
Tom McCain from the select board, uh, speaking on behalf of myself, I think this is extremely helpful. I would suggest that, um, the, if he's sent to the members of the finance committee and to, um, the select board, because we'll probably be discussing taking a position, uh, for next Monday. I don't know if we'll be in a, uh, ability to to make a final decision, but I think this obviously changes the landmark a fair amount. There's a lot of education that goes into the, I would also suggest that a lot of what your discussion of the four separate items, perhaps it could be a paragraph or even a little bit more outlining exactly what they are, because I think just the notation, uh, is not gonna necessarily be enough to, uh, clarify and educate, there's a big educational process here. Uh, but I must say, it's changed my perspective of this this evenings, and I think, um, the efforts that you've made to kind of address some of the concerns, uh, will go a long way also, so it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
But I I do think that, uh, I don't think either the finance committee or the select board have taken positions on this Warren article yet, and, uh, so there needs to be information spread out, and and I think if that were done, that that could help the process a good deal. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, that's great, and.
Great, very.
That's very important, yeah.
Um, do you want me to kind of jump into an update of what we're all doing then?
Right, so everyone's, we're all done, everyone, just wanna make sure everyone's had their questions answered on these, with regard to this.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, well, no, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Um, yeah, let's just spend a few minutes, a quick summary of where.
Just kind of what we've been doing.
What we've been up to and any, just, you know, any revelations?
Yeah, um, I, and I will say first, I left my new title from Justin, what was it, Ghost of Middle School Future.
Middle School Future.
However, this is really clearly a team effort, um, Joanna's chair has done a huge amount of work on this.
Absolutely.
Oh, thanks.
And all of us have jumped in and been doing info sessions and tours and everything, so I just wanna be clear that this is, I I at this point am amazed by this whole group as a team, and it's a, it's a really great effort.
And this person here, too.
Or, and, right, and that was there, and Court too. Um, so I think just the quick high level is that our schedule and everything that we've put together is going really well so far. I've heard great feedback that we are out everywhere and sharing this information. Um, as you all know, there have been a bunch of info sessions already on this. They've had everything from five to twenty people, um, at each of them. Some really good, you know, small group discussions with the smaller groups, some really good share out with twenty people at a time, um, and those are the specific ones that we have held just as middle school information sessions. Some of the other ones with other groups have have drawn great crowds, also in really good discussion. Um, as most of you know, we were at the League of Women Voters First Friday event, which was an overview of all the different Warren articles. Um, but there were a lot of questions brought up there, that it was in the, it was a great place to be able to clarify some of all of this that's going on. Um, the league, the the board of directors of the League of Women Voters then wanted to do some more follow up, and Laurie and I were there with them at their board meeting, um, the week afterwards, and really got in to, were able to get in detail into some of the questions that they had, which I think was very helpful, at least we got good feedback from that. Um, so the the discussions are going on, there are, there are parents who are reaching out and saying, you know, that tell me more, you wanna learn more, there are other residents who are reaching out, um, with questions, wanting to to spread the word more, so I think our outreach efforts are going pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a lot of tours have happened, and we've had pretty good attendance at the tours, at most of them at least, we've had small groups to to larger, um.
So the one thing about the tours, and I, I don't know how many, did you done how many, but first of all, Brian Schleidel showed up for both this weekend, and he he's well.
Yes, and. And he has in the past also.
He's going to, you know, be there when he can, which is really helpful, um, to me, but also the tour notes that you put together, review those, I reviewed them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were also really helpful in terms of, you know, being sure to capture the big themes and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I I certainly got feedback this weekend from everybody that that was really helpful to see and and lay your hands on it and, um, you know, have the experience of being in there, so.
Yeah, it makes it more real.
Lot of work, but we only got, I think, three more weekends, three or four.
A few more weekends. Exactly, yeah.
Um, for the weekend that got snarted, um, we were scheduled to have, um, and they apologized to TV, I'm not sure what we call it now, it's no longer CCTV, but they were gonna come film our tour.
Mini DVD, never. Yes.
Um, has that been done subsequently, or is it, did we sort of put that all?
So I thi- I think it is rescheduled, I don't know exactly which date, cuz Court is actually coordinating with them. Um, but I think it is rescheduled, they have, they have been showing up to video, I actually meant to mention this, thank you, a few of our info sessions, um, and I know they're coming to several of them so that it gives a bunch of footage that they can then help us put together into kind of a summary, highlight reel of
Oh, it's a ticket.
what it is that we're out talking about, and then we can post that on our website, so.
Okay.
We're getting closer on that, um, and thanks to Court, cuz he's helping to kind of manage that piece of it.
Great.
And those can all be helpful to people who, for one reason, are there on a time base, who will make those valid, perhaps.
Yeah, maybe. Right, exactly, exactly, um, so that's very helpful. Um, that's kind of the general, the general overview so far.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, I think that what what that ties right into is the outreach to all of the stakeholder groups that we've talked about.
Mm-hmm. Mm-huh.
Um, that's something, we, you know, we each, we each have a list, sorry, this isn't a a document we're looking at or anything, but we each have a list of the groups that we are gonna be reaching out to. Um, Court sent me an update on the ones that he has spoken to, but I would love it if we can do just a quick update of where we are with all these different groups, is that okay here, is it, I mean, as long as it's not too much to do?
So I'm contacting, um, council of aging and the commission on disabilities.
Okay, great. Oh, good, okay.
Okay. Um, I have, well, I've been with the select board, FinCom, like everybody else, as well, and and talked to Carmen, um,
Right.
I have a few other boards to go to, I, um, I have a scheduled, tentatively scheduled first week of April to go to Milldam Square, which is a bunch of residents that, most of whom don't have kids in school.
Oh, that's great.
To help, um, just explain what's up 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 the town meeting, um.
That's terrific.
And we've started a conversation around youth sports, we're gonna
Oh, good.
start to get out to make sure they understand what's going on, and we're gonna offer anything more on that.
Great, um.
And Concord Business Partnership is pretty up to speed and.
That's great.
So.
Yeah, I had a bunch too, obviously, the League of Women Voters we've been talking to, um, I'm actually joining the tax fairness committee Friday morning, just to give them a a bit of an update. Um, the Concord Ed Fund is meeting tonight and is gonna share out our schedule, um, at least among their board. We held, oh, preschools, didn't mention this one, but we, I held a, we held a
Oh, right.
session specifically for preschool parents, um, Concord Children's Center hosted it, thanks to them. And, uh, it was great, that was well attended, a bunch of preschool parents who were very curious and and happy that we kind of came to them to talk about it, so they could get an understanding. Um, West Concord Advisory Committee have sent word to, and they're gonna just forward our information out. And I've reached out to newcomers club and Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and, um, will have get to hear back, but that was more recent, so, a bunch of groups that we're kind of, that I'm sending information to.
Mm-hmm, that's great.
I, uh, through, through Kate Hanley, we're, I'm attending the climate actions advisory board.
That's great.
Meeting at the end of the month.
Okay, good.
Um, they're likely to take a position, that's the, that's the town's climate board, um, so
Mm-hmm.
was grateful for the invitation to talk through
Yeah.
both articles, actually.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
I would also say the P T G's presidents and all those guys are super engaged and
And, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, working to support it and get the word out.
Great, very good. Any others, um, okay.
No, all of mine are, far as I mentioned, because we're gonna do it.
Mixed in with these, okay. Um, and Court has reached out to some also, I mean.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Um, uh, let's see, what were his, he said that, uh, a couple coming up were community chests, he's gonna be speaking with them soon.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Um, I mean, where he court, he had reached out to somebody, uh, and a couple of others, so, that's good, we're doing a bunch of outreach, I mean,
That's right.
I think the only other thing to add there is if there are any other groups out there who wanna hear from us, let us know, but basically, we're we're really trying to get this information out to everyone in town, so that everybody can be educated and aware of it.
And we still got a lot of sessions in public forum on Sunday.
And we still have lots of sessions going up, exactly.
So.
Um, our our evening public forum on the middle school is this coming Monday evening, unfortunately conflicted with the select board meeting. Um, there are just too many things going on and down to not have them overlap at some point.
Right.
Um, but that's a public forum, and then there will be a a morning version of a public forum also, uh, the following week, on the twenty fifth.
The following Monday, yeah.
Yep, uh, so, lots going on on that front, a lot of good communication out.
Thank you, well, thanks to everybody for all the work.
Yes, to everyone, definitely.
Right.
Um, what else on the middle school, are you teeing up something else for it unless?
No, I'm seeing if anyone has anything else.
I'm watching, uh, I just, she's gonna.
Oh, yes.
So everyone knows, I have to be at the Carlyle Board of Selectmen at nine, so I'm gonna be leaving here in a few minutes.
That's right.
I would allow a minute on the Alcott principal search and the CPS FY twenty budget, if we can do that in the next five minutes.
Yes. Yes, and then, why don't we do that, and then I, we can come back to middle school, because I wanted to
Sorry.
report out on the last finance committee meeting that we were at.
Okay.
And actually echo something that Tom McCain just mentioned, just about both FinCom and select board taking position soon, and some thoughts on that, so, why don't we, um,
Go to the Alcott principal.
Let's, let's agree to what you were talking about first.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it, be able to do this myself, um, we have two really strong finalists for Alcott principal, uh, we've spent a lot of time with both of these candidates. Uh, Naomi Krakow is coming to us as a candidate out of the Boston Public Schools, um, longevity in one school, worked as assistant principal and then as principal, and we've really enjoyed our time and interactions with her. Uh, Julie Vincentson's, uh, long, another twelve year veteran of the principalship, um, in several districts, including her current position in Quavon, also comes to us with a really broad background, they're both really strong instructional leaders, really collaborative with teachers, we're really couldn't have much of a better choice set here, so the the hope I had is exactly where we've landed, which is I now get to do that work to really delve into fit, uh, because both of them can do the job and do it really well, so that's the work we're doing right now, they, um, were both here at different times this morning with the leadership, the administrative team, uh, they're both spending an hour or so with me individually over the next day or two. Um, I'm doing reference checks and have most of them done at this point. So I think we're in a good place probably by the end of the week, last week they were at Alcott for forums with teachers and parents, um, after the search committee, which was a cast of nineteen.
Yeah.
Bigger than mine, all that, uh, that makes me chuckle. Uh, so I I think we've had a lot of really positive feedback on the process, which was really important to us, because we need this to be a decision that people feel good about, um, Alcott's running really, really high functioning right now, and we wanna make sure it stays that way, um, and really make sure that the transition's as smooth and seamless as possible, given given the tenure of a very successful fifteen year veteran, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's exciting, I'm not, not gonna be all excited, so we're all science season off, but, uh, a lot of it's, we're in a great place, so it's been a really successful search process.
That's great, great, great to hear. Thank you for all the time that's going into that.
Yeah, no, it's been really valuable, it's been.
You and the team and the whole committee that's on it.
Time well spent, for sure.
It's great.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move to the agenda.
Can we ask for the budget? I mean, I just wanna personally thank the finance committee for their work Thursday night. Um, they were revisiting their guidelines, we came, we were still at that hundred and forty, whatever thousand dollar delta between our budget and their guideline for the CPS budget. And I just really appreciative that they took the time and thoughtfulness and decided to raise the guideline and.
Lots of them.
Raised the guideline and acknowledged the work that we did, that we were so proud of to bring in the two point nine nine budget and the zero base budgeting process and I, just was a nice validation that that work mattered and um we felt really, it was a great conversation and I'm really appreciative of that discussion and the response that happened, so. Just wanted to say that personally before I go running to Carmen.
Agreed, yeah.
Agreed, thank you, thank you.
All for the hard work on that, yes.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You may go.
Good luck out there.
I know. Nine P M onto another meeting, that's.
Well, superintendent.
I know.
Would you like to circle back to some of the few things remaining?
Yeah, sure, let's do that, um, in fact, good timing, because one of them ties into the finance committee.
Yeah. Capital.
Um, so they decided at their last meeting not to take a position yet on the CMS Warren article at least um because there were some outstanding questions. So all I wanted to mention here was a thought that I've been having, there were a couple of questions that came up there as well as others that we've heard. Um, it actually ties right into the comment that Tom McCain made, but I was thinking of sending an email that we could ask to circulate to the whole finance committee that just tries to answer those questions that have been brought up so that as they try to take a position, they have all the information that they need from us. Um, so I was looking at, oops, that one in front of me, um, basically four different topics that have been brought up, one was about all of this clarification of what's in it, clearly we should communicate that to them.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um, there is a question brought up at this past meeting about the overall debt service of Concord and so just kind of some art, some insight on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, then also the question of the cost of waiting as we've calculated it and whether that is realistic and how so, and just kind of providing some backup on that.
And I'm just gonna add to that, that has come up, I've been to two info sessions and that's come up in each session.
Yeah. Okay.
It's the the question of why wait, you know.
Oh, and what, and that's a, that's a different one, actually, I was talking about the number, we've put a a number in our presentation of,
Yep, yep.
you know, the cost of waiting, if we're waiting two years, that could be twenty two million dollars that is extra to Concord.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, there were questions around, is that really realistic, I think at our last school committee meeting, just question around, is that really realistic?
Yep.
So just wanna make sure that we provide some backup to that number. Um, but then also the the why waiting, that has come up several times, um, finance committee and elsewhere, do we really have to do this now, can't we wait another year? And just providing a little more of our thinking and the facts about why we're saying now. Just a few bullet points so that we're making sure we answer all our questions. So I guess I just wanted to make sure everybody's behind that and chair of the finance committee, I'll send it to you for distribution to the finance committee, if that's okay? Um, and to Tom McCain's point, I think it would be a good idea probably to do the same for the select board, um.
Yep.
Absolutely.
You know, just to clarify all of that information, all of this that's been brought up and any any other questions that they've been brought up.
Yeah, I will work on that to capture all of this.
Um. Okay, and I've actually already started to put some of it together, so we can coordinate.
Might be able to send the same P M.
Right, right, exactly.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Um, so that's, yeah, that just wanted to note.
That'll be helpful.
And I think everything else on our middle school list, we've covered.
Yep, keep marching.
Right? Yes, onward we go.
All right, so um we're gonna go to, hopefully we can get the link, um, because I don't have my computer working. But our school committee goal is just an update to check. Um, check in and see how we're feeling about where we are and uh just, you know, just not spend a ton of time on it, but make sure we're paying attention to what we set out to do. Um, so, excuse me, um, our budget develop, develop a budget that supports the core values and mission of the Concord School Public Schools for approval at the twenty eighteen Concord Town meeting.
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, but it does say eighteen.
So it's eighteen, yeah.
Does it?
It does, no, this is nineteen.
No. Oh, I, this is the wrong, the link is the wrong.
This one says.
Uh-oh.
Uh, okay, so I'm gonna read it from up there.
It's eighteen, eighteen goals, though, yeah, yeah, okay.
Eighteen, nineteen goals.
All right, the one I have linked says approval at the nineteen Concord, this is correct, too.
This, this. This looks like um the regional one. That's Concord Carlisle's. So anyway, for the Concord Public Schools is all we're doing, twenty nineteen Concord Town meeting.
Right.
Which I don't know who has the link, but I'll just read them out, but I would say that with the leadership of Jared and Sam, we're on track.
We did it, we did it. We did it, oh yeah, you did it.
This is, yeah, this is Concord up here, so this is wrong.
Oh, no, we got the right one here.
Yeah.
Are you sure? I, because I have one here that's two thousand nineteen and it's CPS, because it has middle school on it. And this I linked from the agenda.
This I linked, we linked too. I'm just saying that one up there is the regional one here.
Is the wrong one, okay.
I don't know why that was linked, but that's not the right one, anyway, we're gonna continue. Uh, support the superintendent inter-district goals to develop and implement the superintendent evaluation process all lines with the entry plan, district goals and school committee goals. Um, I would say that she is doing a terrific job on that and we've been updated um along the way.
Yeah.
It feels like we're paying attention to that, on target.
Yeah.
Uh, strategic plan, by June twenty nineteen, implement the strategic plan that supports the core values and mission of the Concord Public Schools. So I think that um speaks to this this, the reports that she has done, looping back to the the priorities of the strategic plan. Um, which we've seen in in uh some of the mindfulness, the middle school.
A lot of the work that's going on.
They uh, yeah, the um, oh my gosh, just lost my thought, uh.
Cultural proficiency or.
Oh, culture, thank you, cultural proficiency, so.
Which comes up later too, but.
Yeah, um, anyone stop me if there's more to discuss, I just wanna be mindful, we're really, we're working hard.
No, I think that's important, the strategic plan is a is a big item, but I think it's really nice to see progress on it already.
Yes, paying attention to some of this pieces of it.
Yep.
Uh, community engagement and communication, school committee will continue to work on providing multiple opportunities for multiple, by multiple means and in various venues for school committee, community engagement and communication in order for parties to share information, exchange ideas and address concerns. Um.
I think that got kicked into overdrive.
Yeah, I know, I think you're on.
Yeah, I don't know how to. Yeah.
I'll be on that.
I think check that back.
We're in a community engagement on steroids right now.
No, I see this is, this is at least a draft, I don't know what this link is, but.
Here, I've got the one that was connected to the, finally got it.
Oh, this one, okay, thank you.
That's.
Um, all right, the cultural competency goal, or it's also interchangeable with cultural proficiency sometimes. Uh, by June twenty nineteen, evaluate the accommodations for religious and cultural exertances policy and student absences and excuses policy implementation as well as initial cultural competency work and develop goals from base, from basic training for the FY twenty year. Um, I would say that we need to circle back on that closer to June, but that the cultural competency work, we've gotten some updates on and um it seems like that particularly superintendent leadership team are, and the faculty are all um working.
Very focused on that this year.
Yeah, working towards a lot of that um being done and and implemented well, those policies.
Yep.
All right, here's another goal, how about this one?
Yeah.
Establish the next steps and timeline and planning process for new CMS facility.
Yeah.
I think we're, I think we're ahead on that one.
We'll get to that later in this.
I think we're, yeah, I think we're overachieving, yeah. All right, and finally, um, under assessing practices and protocols, a goal by November of twenty eighteen, hoping that's correct, the school committee will develop and publish in document form both practices and protocols that will guide the conduct of committee business.
We did that.
Which we did.
Yep.
Good.
So I think you all um are doing an amazing job staying true to our goals and I think we're in a good position to to achieve our goals for this year. Congratulations.
That was a nice pat on the back, we should do that properly.
Right, we're on. Well, it's good to, you know, mark those in in interview.
It is, it's good to touch base on the goal and make sure they were.
Simple, is this correct? Um, because the A was Concord Cala, but then it goes into the middle school.
So I'm gonna check, is this?
So I just wanna get the corrects, like.
So the only, I think, I think that.
Oh, you're right, the A, that's the only A from the.
A is the only one where the language seems to be.
It was just a typo.
Right.
But it said Concord Carlisle Regional.
Because we have the same one at the region.
Right.
Fix that.
So that just needs to be fixed in the shit of the Concord Public School. And take out Carlisle Town meeting and then we're good.
Is the one that you were reading on correct?
It was the first draft, that was linked in the first agenda.
Okay.
So it seems we just need to.
One that's linked to the agenda now.
Just needs those corrections in A.
Just needs that change in the first part.
Thank you for paying attention to that, Jared.
No, get it changed.
Thank you. I know that Erin and Jared and Lori, you guys have all done a great amount of work to pick up for Leona who's out and so.
It's right.
All done.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Erin, I know you're helping out.
Much appreciated.
All right, let's do a couple votes here, vote to accept, an entertaining motion to vote to accept the donation of the Alcott sign.
So moved.
Second, second.
Do we need more detail than that or is that enough?
Uh, no, I don't think, I think we're good, any more questions, just?
No, just great, thanks.
Yep, great, thanks. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, and then a motion to vote to accept the Boston Foundation grant check.
I don't know, I'm looking it up, do we need a specific wording here? I move that the Concord School Committee votes to accept the grant from the Christopher and Deborah Wyse Paul Charitable Trust, a donor advised fund of the Boston Foundation in the amount of a thousand dollars.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Very generous.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I feel.
Been nice of them to consider us in their donation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Motion to adjourn.
You guys have done a lot, wow.
There is a motion to, is there a motion to adjourn?
There is.
Second.
That is a whole other thing, oh, all those in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.